Welcome to the August 21, 2024 Barnstable School Committee meeting. I will begin with the district vision and core values. District vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which all students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the forefront of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by the Chair, Video and Audio Recording of Meeting. This school committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's government access channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, the chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to make their presence known. You're recording? We have one person recording. Routine business: Item 2.1, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anybody here for public comment? All right, you can, when you come up, would you please state your name and the town or village in which you're here? No, I have it. I'm good.
I'm Nancy Thompson. I'm a committee member here in Hyannis, Massachusetts. I've been here for over 21 years. And I'm here to speak, I'm here to speak in support of this school system that I think has a lot of potential and a lot of hope and a lot of goodwill. However, I've been lately, with the latest issue with the dismissal of Hope Taylor, that has taken my breath out. And I do have to go back to what the first time I sat in a school committee meeting here, and I was so impressed, I was so hopeful, and I was so glad by how the discussion about what it's, what it means to have diversity in the system, what it means to have equity, what it means to have inclusion, what it means to have belonging. And I think above all, it meant what it means to be kind. And I thought that that discussion that I heard in this school committee meeting a few years ago, everybody seemed so serious, so thoughtful, and so willing to make sure everything that they were talking about came to fruition. And then I saw how the school committee said, I think that the person to carry forward would be Dr. O'Hearn here. And she has shown that she has, she has those qualities, those insights, and those sensibilities. So I'm at a, am I at a gas to how we come to this point where we have a longstanding educator, a black educator, who the Globe, Boston Globe, on July 25, 2021 praised and talked about that same hope, that same enthusiasm about this particular system that we find ourselves here. I'm just here to recommend that, that Hope Taylor be retained or be brought back into her position because she is revered, she is beloved, she is, she brings forth a lot of things. And I think removing her is a very unkind act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rhodes. I'm the president of the NAACP for the Cape Cod Chapter. My observations from the last board meeting include, the chair made a statement asserting, I have essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, that there would be open meeting, open public comment for 30 minutes, and it was at her discretion to extend that or not. The way in which those comments were stated, the audience took a breath, and there was some distress. Recognizing the discomfort, one board member addressed the audience to clarify stating that everyone would be heard, given what it took for people to rearrange their schedules to be present. This member was trying to simply alleviate the unease that caused, that was caused by the chair's statement, as both the audience understood that it meant that the public comment would be restricted, and people were trying to decide who should speak and who should not. What was troubling is, at the break, that one person was significantly reprimanded in a public space for doing what he felt was trying to open up a situation where people could be heard. To me, this incident highlights the urge, the urgent need for diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging initiatives within our community. Fairness and equity should be a cornerstone of all public decisions and discussions. I'm disheartened to hear and witness the length of time it took for one person's decision about her employment status to take place, causing me to question that this decision was made after the reinstatement or the continuation of the superintendent, thus making me question, had this dismissal been made before the review of the superintendent, would situations have been changed? My understanding is, we, Barnstable County, has a fidelity, is to, the fidelity to District Improvement Plan includes a culture of belonging, a vigorous curriculum, among other things. The commitment to Principles and Educated Diversity Act, in my opinion, the decision to reprimand the educators on this one issue where one person was terminated contradicts the principles and the commitment for the Diversity Act. I heard the beeps of all of them.
You may finish.
Thank you. Massachusetts General Law has instilled that we need to have diversity and then educate, and a diverse in education, a diverse and, a diverse workforce and education. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Danielle Hill. I am a 30-year resident at Barnstable, and a taxpayer, and an active voter, which means that the committee that sits before me is essentially employed by me and my peers in the community. And since the dismissal of Hope Taylor, I have been floored by the response from the community that I knew would come. People, people's children have expressed fear to enter the building when school starts at the beginning of the year because they feel like their voice has been silenced by her absence. And I am concerned about the concerning trend of dismissal of educators and staff of color, particularly on Barnstable High School. There have been three in the last 14 months, and that is extremely, extremely disturbing considering the diversity of the student body. And according to the committee's policy manual, the committee has the dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and local citizens' expectations for the education of the community's youth. And it also has an obligation to determine and assess the citizens' desires. And I'm fairly certain that our desires were clearly heard at the last committee meeting. Your responsibility is also to establish policies and make decisions on the basis of declared educational philosophy and goals, most crucial of which is the optimal learning of the children enrolled in our schools. And I would argue that in dismissing Hope Taylor, you are eliminating a very precise slice of the student body when it comes to their optimal learning. And you are to act as a truly representative body for members of the community. And I would argue with you today that some of the decisions that have come out of this committee have not necessarily been truly representative of the voice of the community. And I want to state publicly my intent to shine a glaring light on the discriminatory practices of hiring and firing, particularly in the Barnstable High School. And I will do everything in my power to personally and passionately affect change of whatever policy it is that has led to this disturbing trend and swung the pendulum of diversity and inclusion in the absolute wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here for public comment? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I can reopen public comment when the person arrives for that individual. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, thank you. Public comment is now closed. Item 2.2, School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Jen, do you have anything this evening?
First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming out and speaking. And then, as far as subcommittee notes are concerned, I believe at the next meeting we're going to discuss the Subcommittee for Goals that Andre and I have been working on. And so that would be the only update I have, which isn't much of one. But thank you, everyone, for coming out. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Jen. Andre?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I have a few comments that I would like to, like to make. So first of all, thank you to the community for being here at this meeting, expressing your concerns, the vision, the expectations that you have for the Barnstable Public Schools. I will say that you've been heard, and that the emphasis and focus on making sure that our practices, our policies, our decisions on a day-to-day basis are in the best interest of student achievement will be tenacious during the course of this school year. I want the community to understand that the day-to-day decision-making within a district falls under the purview of our superintendent. And so I did see a little bit of misunderstanding there in terms of how we arrive at our decisions. That's the superintendent's decision, and we trust that those decisions are keeping within Massachusetts General Law. And again, at the end of the day, the role of the school committee and the superintendent is to accelerate and continue to see improvement in our student outcomes. Our role as a school committee is to oversee finance. I did see committee members, excuse me, I did hear in public comment talking about taxpayer dollars, which is what fund the school committee and what all of our resources, all of our expenditures, our legal fees, come from taxpayer dollars. And so our role on the school committee is to be a good steward of said investment. And again, there will be a continual and persistent focus on that goal, on that charge, and we'll discuss that further in this meeting. Secondly, we deal with policy and the policies of the district. And I don't mind saying that not just our district, I saw a committee during public comment, it was referenced, the Educated Diversity Act, proposed legislation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to accelerate our educator diversity. From the 8% place where it stands now to 20-plus percent by 2030, this is proposed legislation on the floor of the House and the Senate, giving DESI the resources to improve, to increase, to encourage our educators of color. Massachusetts leads the nation, something that I'm proud to state, in public education. And the clear directive of our governor, of our education commissioner, and of our superintendents is to do everything in their power to make sure that our schools reflect our communities. This is the law in the Commonwealth. Our role as a school committee is to make sure that we are abiding by said laws. To conclude on this point, decisions regarding personnel, again, are not our role, but I want the committee to, I want the community to recognize the process and how it moves forward. Once a district makes a decision regarding personnel, by the way, this is included in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 41, if anybody would like to look further. Once a community makes a decision regarding personnel, those staff members have the right to appeal said decision to the state. In an arbitration process, it takes time. But the state will be the final decider, arbiter, of personnel matters that reach this point. And according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 41, the bottom line for this decision is what is in the best interest of the students in those districts. I want the community to understand that. So decisions have been made, and there are further steps that are being taken to ensure that we in Barnstable are doing everything in our power to put student achievement at the forefront. Kathy, I have a number of slides. Would you want me to go now, or would you want me to go?
Those are better at the end. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Peter.
All right, I'm going to go on a different subject. I was interested in the story I read last week about Sandwich High School not allowing cell phones in class. And I don't believe they banned phone, but provide each class with a phone caddy or lockbox where kids put phones in before class, and it's a mandatory policy. And I just heard a couple days ago that Martha's Vineyard Schools are not allowing phones, providing locked pouches for mobile phones, smartwatches, air buds, again, being mandatory. And right before I came to this meeting, I believe D Y is also starting a policy this year. I don't have all the details, but it's a mandatory policy about not having cell phones. And we all know the phones are damaging student performance and attentiveness, and the evidence is seemingly overwhelming that more and more schools are developing policies similar to these Cape schools. I believe we received a grant to provide our high school teachers with some type of phone caddy, but not all teachers use them. This was not a mandatory policy, and that creates its own problems, I guess. So it is inevitable that this school committee will need to address the cellphone subject, and hopefully sooner rather than later. And I believe we'll have the overwhelming support of the staff, and hopefully parents as well. I guess I'm asking, should, should this be an agenda item in the coming month or two? Because I believe that soon the vast majority of school committees in our state will have developed a policy. And it'll be interesting to monitor how the policies are working out in Sandwich and Martha's Vineyard, and I guess D Y. And there may be other towns in the Cape that have policies as well. I just may not be aware of them. And I'm just bringing this up because I just think it's time. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. All right, I have a short report. I had the privilege of attending the 2024 summer graduation. It was a beautiful evening, couldn't have been better, and a wonderful ceremony to celebrate the successes of our final graduates for 2024. It was the largest summer graduation class at 28 that people could recall, so that was terrific to see. The Subcommittee on Policy Revision met on August 12. We reviewed policies that were impacted by the changes in the federal Title IX regulation. They'll be on the agenda later on this evening. And then to my fellow school committee members and also the public who attend and read our materials, you might have noticed that there have been some changes in this evening's agenda. In an effort to try to streamline the meetings, we took some of the added a consent agenda at the end of the meeting. Those are for the routine approvals, such as approving the minutes, approving, it could be for something like approving a field trip that has already thoroughly been vetted and is a routine field trip, and some grants, gifts, and donations. For every, just so everybody knows, we have at least a week to read most of the materials and make inquiries of the superintendents, so it's not that we're not paying attention or trying to hide anything. We're just trying to group those at the end of the meeting so that when we have guests, and we have a lot of business, we can get that done first. You'll notice some additional changes coming in September. We're going to add the Pledge of Allegiance and have some students coming from various schools. And as we rotate the student, students by grade level, we will ask them to share any concerns they may have with us, so that we're getting input from the whole student body, from kindergarten through, or elementary, not specific grade level, but elementary through the high school. That will be in addition to our two high school student envoys who report monthly. So as this, this is evolving, you'll notice some changes, so that after the September-October meetings, we should have a consistent agenda format. All right. So you have a short presentation, Andre?
I do, Kathy. Thank you. As I say, Barnstable is not without challenges, but we are a large, we are a diverse, and we are a dynamic school district, and every month there are a plethora of things going on where our students and families are taking place, taking part. The 8th Annual Unity Day took place on August 2 in Hyannis, organized by People of Action, Barnstable Police, and the Town of Barnstable. The event was enjoyed by community members and tours alike, with Barnstable students serving as volunteers to make sure that everything ran smoothly. The 27th Annual Kids' Day took place on August 14 at Barnstable High School, organized by Barnstable Police and Barnstable Fire Departments. The event featured Barnstable Recreation's graduating class of summer youth police academy students, along with games, activities, prizes, and prizes for those in attendance. Continuing on, Governor Maura Healey stopped by Four Seas Ice Cream last week, visiting the kitchen with owners Peggy and Doug Warren, State Representative Kippy Diggs, and our hard-working Barnstable High School students, shown there on the left. A Four Seas Ice Cream is the oldest continuing operating ice cream shop in the state, and Governor Healey gave the Warrens a proclamation marking their 90th anniversary. The Kiwanis Club of Cape Cod, People of Action, and the Barnstable Police are partnering on a backpack drive that's taking place at Staples in Hyannis this Sunday. So anybody, the community's come out, we've had great attendance there, it'll take place this Sunday from 12 to 6 p.m. The giveaway will take place on Tuesday, August 27, at Hyannis Youth and Community Center from 3 to 8 p.m. So I'm just going to go back, just so people can see, there's a drive. And then on Tuesday, August 27, Tuesday coming, Tuesday coming up here, let me get the calendar right, at H Y C C, if you need school supplies, if you need backpacks, if you need to check in, many of our community mentors are also members of People of Action. So if you have a student that might need guidance, that might need a male figure to kind of connect with, you can go ahead and meet our community mentors. So the backpack drive is on Sunday, and the giveaway will take place on Tuesday. A friendly reminder, new Chromebooks are going to be assigned to every Barnstable High School student at the beginning of the school year. Therefore, students, please bring your assigned devices, chargers, and case, and preparation for the swap. This is on the 28th and the 29th. This will be the first days of school, just like that, next Wednesday. It's been a very active summer for our student athletes, and I'm glad to report, this is the 12U Cape Cod War Dogs Travel Flag Football Team, featuring many students of Barnstable Intermediate School. So these are intermediate school students, some are getting ready to make that leap up into the high school. They competed in nine tournaments this spring, including, this is at Battle Over the Bridge, which took place at Barnstable High School recently, and they won all nine tournaments, including a victory over the number-one flag football team in America, launching them into the top 10 rankings nationally. Our Cape Cod War Dog Lady Warriors also competed in the Battle of the Bridge, taking home the title for, taking home their second championship of the spring and the summer season. I bring this up because the MIAA is in the process of approving girls' flag football as a spring sport for the 2025-2026 school year. Deliberations are taking place during the fall and the winter, and the final decision is going to come in February of 2025. So in, not this school year, but the next school year, for those interested, girls' flag football, along with orienteering, cheerleading, and ultimate frisbee, are on the docket for new sports for those who may be interested. Our boys' basketball team finished competition in the Mass Premier Summer League held in Mansfield. The team made the playoffs, winning their first-round matchup, and we are looking forward to another productive and successful season this winter. Our girls' volleyball team won the championship in the H Y C C Summer League in a competitive matchup with the D Y Dolphins. Over the previous three years, one of these two teams has been represented in each state championship, so it was a very good matchup, there's a very good competition, and a lot of these players are friends. But the Barnstable Red Hawks came out victorious in the summer league. Barnstable High School junior Colin Gleason completed the 106 annual Massachusetts Boys Amateur Championship at Bass River and Bayberry Hills Golf Courses. He was one of only 16 competitors to advance to match play. Colin was the lone Cape Codder to do so, making the quarterfinals. Colin will be competing on our boys' golf team this fall. And our Cape Cod, excuse me, our Barnstable Football Team won the 2024 Passing League Championship held at Mashpee High School. Over 30 student athletes participated on two separate teams, culminating with a 24-13 win over Naucet. The football team was prominently featured in the Cape Cod Times recently. The football team was prominently featured in the Cape Cod Times recently. They reached the Final Four last season, and the coaching staff and the team has made it clear that they are not rebuilding, they are most certainly reloading for the upcoming season. As my colleagues spoke to, the summer graduation was last Monday at the high school. I was not able to attend but was thrilled to see. I believe we had 28 graduates in the program, one of our larger class having that opportunity. And these students, these 2024 graduates, will be moving on to their success in the next phase of the journey. Speaking of our 2024 graduates, Barnstable graduate Aidan Kundal, who was the quarterback on the football team and a member of the Mandarin Club, was sworn in for NAPS. That's the Naval Academy Preparation... excuse me, I have it right here. The Naval Academy Preparatory School, where Navy and Coast Guard candidates prepare for their fall semester. After the four weeks completing the indoc training, Aidan is now ready to begin his coursework. And I bring that up to highlight one of our graduates who's moved on and is having success and is continuing to work hard and see the fruits of his labor. We're very excited, going into this school year, to have our J R O T C program coming online. We will be the only school, not only on the Cape, but in the region, to offer this pathway. And so I want the community to be aware, for those students who are interested, reach out. This is one of our pathways that I think is going to glean considerable results, because it was not just Aidan, and I'm going to conclude, others of our students have gone on to distinguish service and success in our armed forces, and we are proud of them.
Thank you.
May I just add something quickly? I just want to say thank you. It's awesome to get the synopses of what's going on. I think it gives me a much better perspective of what's happening, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't know. Did the person show? Would you like to come to public comment? All right, come on up. I will now reopen public comment.
My name is Norma Norcross, and I'm going to give...
Yeah, can you?
It is glungreen.
Oh, do you want to bend the mic?
A little bit closer? Can you hear me now?
You can bend it.
Okay. My name is Norma Norcross, and I'm going to give Erin Faro my minutes to speak tonight.
And I'm Colleen Pitts, I'm giving Erin Faro my minutes as well.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Erin Faro. I'm a graduate of Barnstable High School, a former Barnstable educator, and a current town resident. To say the least, I am invested in this town. After all, it has raised me. It is with great concern that I come forward today to address the situation that has been ongoing at various buildings within Barnstable Public Schools. While I understand measures are currently underway to address the mold infestation and poor air quality that exists at both Barnstable High School and Barnstable United Elementary School, this has not always been the case. I taught in the Barnstable school system from 2017 to 2021, at both Barnstable United Elementary School and Barnstable Intermediate School. During this time, I experienced devastating effects to my health due to me, unbeknownst to me, ongoing issues with mold infestation and poor air quality. While teaching there, I experienced a variety of devastating symptoms relating to mold exposure, including chronic upper respiratory infections. I was placed on rounds of antibiotics, steroids, and inhalers, eventually leading to a diagnosis of asthma. I attended countless doctor's appointments and had far too many emergency room visits, including an ambulance ride from B U E S due to my oxygen dropping to dangerously low levels. I missed an enormous amount of time at work, and at the age of 39, I wondered if I was going to have to live this life forever. I had no idea why I was so sick, nor did my doctors. I was questioned about my working conditions, but said I had not seen anything change in the building. Committed to my career and my students, I continued to try and work, never thinking it could be something in the school that was making me sick. In the summer of 2019, rumors surfaced of mold growing around B U E S. Pictures were circulating among teachers and concerns were raised. I wondered if this was why I had been so sick, especially since my health had been better during the summer. Shortly before school began in August, the district stated the situation at B U E S had been dealt with. Days later, I returned to B U E S to start the school year. In less than a week, I was in a full asthma exacerbation and back in the emergency room needing treatment in order to breathe, confirming my greatest fears. The environment I had been working in for the last two years had made me sick. In addition, many coworkers were also experiencing symptoms that were thought to be related to poor air quality and mold exposure. After my physicians reported the situation to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, confirmation of mold growth, along with recommendations from the Department of Public Health were given, which included an overhaul of the HVAC system. I also raised my concerns regarding the environment and its safety for both staff and students. I continuously advocated for change to take place from the town of Barnstable, including the former superintendent's office, human resources facilities, the town health manager, and the Barnstable Teachers Association, and the Massachusetts Teachers Association, so that I could return to work. And more importantly, so B U E S was a safe place for both teachers and students. While some changes were made, including cleaning the vents at B U E S, these were just Band-Aids to a much bigger problem. Unfortunately, my countless emails, phone calls, and pleas were passed from department to department and person to person, each saying it was someone else's responsibility to address. Ultimately, I was told to just get a new job. Not willing to give up on my career, I requested and was granted a transfer to Barnstable Intermediate School, since the school district could not meet the recommendations from my doctors in order to return to B U E S. When I walked in on the first day at B I S, I found mold growing up the walls. I again advocated for a safe environment to work. The mold on the wall was cut out, but the overall issue of mold growth was not addressed. In two months' time, I was back in the emergency room from the unsafe air quality, which placed me out on medical leave again. Ultimately, these experiences left me with a choice to make. I could breathe, or I could continue on in my career in Barnstable. I chose to breathe. My resignation from a career I loved was heartbreaking. Thankfully, I have been able to work on regaining my health, and while I will always have damage to my lungs from working at B U E S, I am now a much healthier person. It has taken many years to get to this point. I understand that the same situation has repeated itself this summer, with mold growing all over B U E S. According to the Massachusetts Department of Labor Standards, one inspector told me that in his 13-year career, it was the first time seeing anything to this level, when speaking of the mold. He said, and I quote, "It is not a question of if there is mold, it is a question of what to do about it." In hearing about this, to say I am disappointed in the district is an understatement. An opportunity existed five years ago to address this same situation, while district leaders chose to ignore it. Since 2019, there have been three workers' compensation cases filed that I am aware of in relation to the mold and indoor air quality in Barnstable Public Schools. This is far too much. The health and welfare of our teachers needs to be made a priority. Superintendent O'Hern, I want to applaud you for choosing to act differently this time. From what I understand, you acted swiftly, closing B U E S and contacting a mold remediation service before the state investigators even arrived. You, along with Principal Wajkowski, have educated the teachers on the steps that will be taken to address this issue, to make sure that our schools are safe for everyone, students and teachers alike. My goal in speaking tonight is to reiterate the importance of this. So often, do plans start out strong only to dwindle as time goes on. I can assure you, this is not one that cannot be phased out. I'm not only encouraging the town, but demanding that all leaders of Barnstable Public Schools make safety within the schools a priority, including the physical environment. The health and safety of not only our teachers, but our children are dependent on it. I also encourage teachers, parents, and students to speak out about their concerns. There is no shame in advocating for a safe place to work and learn. Finally, Dr. O'Hern, I would encourage you as superintendent to update the larger school community as they are waiting to hear from you. From what I understand, a plan for B U E S has already been laid out to shut off the A C and complete mold testing to confirm the safety of the school's air quality, with eventually replacing the HVAC system. It is imperative that this plan is followed through with and work continue to be done. Unfortunately, this will not be a quick fix, and simply shutting off the A C is not going to prevent mold growth. More investigation of why the mold continues to be a problem needs to occur. I understand Cape Cod is an area with high moisture, which can cause mold to grow. However, I also know I do not have mold growing on the walls of my home, and I am assuming none of you would allow for that in your homes either. B U E S is home to many students. I strongly encourage you to treat it that way, too. I also strongly encourage you to evaluate all school buildings in Barnstable, as this is not an isolated incident. The buildings have been neglected for years and need a great deal of work to keep them healthy. A long-term plan needs to be created in order to evaluate and address the quality of all school buildings. I expect that the townspeople will be kept up to date on this with full transparency. Whether you were hired or voted in to a position as a leader in the town of Barnstable, by accepting that role, you have made a commitment to serve this community in the best interest of its people. I know that you all hold difficult positions. I don't envy you by any means. What I do know is that you have a choice to make as to what kind of leader you want to be, one who acts ethically and responsibly to serve the community you have been trusted with, or to simply pass the issues and problems on to others. I encourage you to constantly and consistently reflect on this choice as you embark on another year of supporting the education of Barnstable's children. Many will be watching. I know I will be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment?
Hi, thank you. My name is Erin Peterson. I'm from Catuette. My daughter is going into fourth grade at Barnstable United, and I'd like to speak briefly about some questions that other people in the community have around the topic that was just brought up. It sounds like great efforts are being made, however, I'm hoping for transparency on just a few things. I learned that DPH states that EPA guidelines for mold remediation don't need to be followed if mold is due to condensation in the A C ducts, which is terminology that was used in the first letter that the superintendent sent out. So I'm curious if the school falls under said umbrella, and if so, what particular guidelines are being used? That being said, testing is not generally suggested unless occupational respiratory illnesses or toxic mold has already been identified. So I'm wondering, as well as others in the community, has there been any other reports of fungal respiratory issues or other health problems that allude to mold toxicity with students and faculty? And if so, is someone keeping track of this? I'm also curious about what considerations are being made about the tiles in the ceiling being replaced after the students are already in session? And I am curious if the test results are going to be made public so that parents can make informed decisions about our children? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. Item 2.3, superintendent's report.
Thank you. So normally, we don't respond to public comment, but my superintendent's report does address a few of the items that were talked about tonight, so I will make a few remarks. I'm sorry if you folks had to leave in this time. I guess what I would offer to the community is that anything I say tonight, I do not believe will be an adequate response to demonstrate my sensitivities towards the feelings of our students, families, and staff. I've been meeting with community leaders, and we've been talking together about actions we can take to collaborate. And while I think my words probably ring hollow, I look forward to demonstrating actions in the future, including with the school committee through things like the District Improvement Plan, to demonstrate my commitment towards diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. I do have an entire update on school readiness. There are a number of things that have occurred this summer that we've been working on, but I will start and rearrange. So if I'm a little bumpy, I'm just going to rearrange to address facilities first and foremost, and I'll jump right to Barnstable United Elementary School. I'm not going to be able to address... I took down four very discreet points that you were asking about just now, and some are more technical than I can answer in the moment, and so I'll have to take them under advisement. But what I will share is that the cleanup... I went over to Barnstable United Elementary today and walked through the building to get a sense of where things are as they continue their work. I wanted to specifically do that in advance of tonight's meeting. And if I have one regret through all of this is, sort of, I've been chomping at the bit to provide an update to the community regarding where things stand. The last information that went out was mid-July, when we shut the building down based on Service Master's onsite inspection. But truth be told, it's been an evolving situation, where as Service Master has conducted their work, they've been going meticulously through the building and identifying locations. And so honestly, the scope of the project expanded within the past three or so weeks. I will make the hygienist's report available. I do have that, and I'm happy to not just send it out, but put it on the website so people can access it and see what the hygienist has, you know, sort of said after the remediation has happened. We'll also put a summary together around all of the steps that Service Master took. Very briefly, what I can say is that there was concern about the ceiling tiles picking up moisture, particularly on the first floor, because of the way in which the ducts are situated in the ceiling. So the concerns were worse in the first floor than on the second floor. So there were a couple of affected classrooms on the second floor. There was more concern in classrooms on the first floor. So they... I think the areas of greatest concern were things that are porous, things that are non-porous can be cleaned with appropriate cleaning... I don't want to say chemicals, but everything's made of chemicals. But with appropriate solutions, porous... non-porous surfaces can be cleaned, but porous surfaces were very, very carefully examined, and things like bulletin boards had to be disposed of. There was actually quite a bit growing on the bulletin boards, and that couldn't have been remediated. The ceiling tiles got wet and were curling, and so many of the ceiling tiles in the first floor and then in parts of the second floor were removed. And we walked through last Wednesday or Thursday, and we discussed the three next steps that needed to happen, which were replacing ceiling tiles, cleaning out the HVAC ducts, and having contracted cleaners come in, because we just knew that we wouldn't have the power to do that on our own. All of which needed to go through an emergency waiver process with the state through procurement. So that took another couple of days to secure vendors to do that, and I was very reluctant to communicate anything without certainty. I wanted to provide as much certainty to our families and to our staff about what was to come ahead. Having walked through today, the ceiling tiles in the first four classrooms are nearly 100% complete, and they're going to be doing the hallways tomorrow, which will leave a few classrooms upstairs. So I actually think that that's exceeding my expectation. So I actually think that that's exceeding my expectations of where the ceiling tile replacement was going to be. The HVAC duct work is happening as we speak. They're working 12-hour shifts overnight in order to accommodate that, and the cleaning crew will start this weekend. So I think that's what I have to sort of share back to you around readiness as it relates to BUES. And we'll make that testing available for our families and for our faculty and staff. It hasn't been easy, and I know that is impacting the staff who want to be in this week setting up their classrooms, and we're doing the best we can and appreciate people's flexibility. Elsewhere in the district, we did have a mold development issue at the cafeteria in the high school. That was a much simpler project, but proceeded similarly with respect to Service Master coming in and cleaning up the mold in the cafeteria. We do have mold or mildew or potential mold build up, but in a small enough contained amount. Our own custodians can clean that up, but when it gets to a certain threshold, we have to call in Service Master. We do have a report on the high school kitchen as well, and that has come back as passing and acceptable. We...they're still continuing to clean up from the small electrical fire that occurred at the high school, which occurred in one small little room. It's not a classroom. And we had contracted cleaners come in this summer. We've been operating with some vacancies in our custodial department. We did have contracted cleaners come in to do the second floor of the high school a couple of weeks ago. At West Villages, they had a big project this summer. This is not intended to be a thorough CIP update. We are planning for a CIP update with our new director of facilities in a couple of meetings. At West Villages, they had carpets torn out, and carpets have been replaced with tiles. They have made significant progress through that. There was also a little bit...it's a big project, and we're down to the wire. There are a couple of rooms still to go, including counselor's office and a teacher workroom, but the classrooms are in very good shape. We had a paving project at Centerville to create an accessible pathway to the playground, and there were certainly other regular maintenance and cleaning operations that happened through our facilities department. At the next meeting, we'll have new administrators come and be introduced to the school committee and the community, and you'll get a chance to meet our new director of facilities, Doug Bellanger, who is in the process of hiring a deputy director. In addition to facilities, in terms of getting ready for school, the transportation office has been working hard to register bus riders, collect payments, develop routes, and issue bus passes. The bus passes are being handed out from the intermediate school today and tomorrow. We are still short some drivers in case anyone is looking for employment. That being said, we have all of our routes covered. I would like to thank Sandy Gifford and her entire team, as well as Five Star. Food Services has had a busy summer and is also busy preparing for the fall. We have applied for and have received another four years of community eligibility provision certification through the federal government for free lunch, which will come with an additional 1% in reimbursement of meals. The state...if we didn't get...if the state meals program goes away, this means that we would continue to get free lunch through the federal government. I want to thank Dave Bedeau and his team for submitting our application. They also had a number of school sites this summer where they were providing meals to children. This was at five locations. The food services department also updated cafeteria tables at West Villages and Centerville, and BUES will get new tables, which is anticipated for drop-off on the 27th. And the fresh fruit and vegetable program grant was awarded for FY '25 at five locations. The Family and Community Engagement Center has been very busy. Registration is underway. We'll have an update in October based on preliminary numbers, but right now, they are registering 10 to 15 new students per day. We do have a vaccine clinic underway that FCEC is helping to facilitate along with our wellness coordinator. We have 150 students signed up to get their required vaccines for school, and so there's been a lot of communication around that and opportunities to provide these vaccinations. They've also been operating the food pantry through the summer with the collaboration of Capabilities Farm and Cape Kids Meals. 115 families have signed up, and about 20 utilized the pantry over the summer. During the school year, participation is about 30 families per week. And then lastly, we've had a really fortunate grant this summer through the state via McKinnevento, which is...which goes to support homeless children and their families. We typically think about McKinnevento during the school year, helping to provide things like transportation, but we did have a summer allocation. And under the direction of Mary Beth Taylor in the central office, Maura Bunshu and her staff have been working with McKinnevento funds to put together backpacks, hygiene products, and clothing to support 150 homeless youth attending Barnstable Public Schools. The grant also came with funding for some opportunity to pay school counselors, our family and parent liaisons, and our community mentors to engage in family outreach and dropping off supplies and meeting and greeting for a friendly face. Families could also pick up these items at the Community Engagement Center. I think from what I hear from Maura, our work this summer has facilitated getting bus passes as well into the hands of families sooner. So kudos to all of those folks for their work as we open up the school year. And then staffing is the last one. Like every year, it's been a busy summer hiring season, although we are hiring fewer positions than we have in the past, and we had a smaller number of departures last spring than we've had in recent times. So our new teacher orientation, which kicked off last Friday, was a smaller cohort than we've seen in recent years. But we are actively hiring and interviewing people this week. We are still, like many districts, having trouble filling certain positions, like speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, and PCAs, which are always hard to fill. We're always looking for substitutes and bus drivers, and our website has our vacant positions posted. But we are filling our ESL vacancies very well, particularly at Barnstable High School and at the intermediate school, where we have struggled to get staffing for a full complement of ESL teachers, and so that is good news. Let's see. Backing up a step, I have two more things for you. One is an update that I shared with the school committee via an email, but I do want to share it to the community and actually add a little bit more detail. The final Massachusetts budget was approved within the past couple of weeks, and it continues the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative to maintain the expanded universal access to high-quality preschool with a focus on gateway cities and rural communities. We were a recipient in FY '24 for a planning grant, so the FY '25 budget continues to fund supports towards universal preschool. The budget fully funds the fourth year implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. As we know, the way that they calculated inflation and have applied money towards inflation did not yield the typical increase or the more recent typical increase that Barnstable has seen as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. But instead of minimum aid coming in at $30 per pupil, the final budget supports an increase of $104 per pupil for minimum aid districts like Barnstable. So while we anticipated about 160,000 of new funds in Chapter 70, it's coming in more like 550,000. That goes to the finance department, and then it gets kind of reallocated under the 60-40 revenue sharing agreement with the town. The state is continuing to provide universal free school meals. As I mentioned, we're a CEP district, and so ours comes from the federal government, and whatever the federal government doesn't cover, the state makes up the difference. There's also some money in there to support early literacy programs. We're currently exploring if and how that might fit with our GLEAM initiative. On tonight's agenda, you're accepting some money to support the implementation of our literacy program, but we're seeing if there's further opportunity here. High school innovation pathways and early college and green school programs. One of the big announcements was in higher education, and we've sent this out to our faculty and staff, but I think it also has some implications for our graduates, which is that a program called Mass Educate is coming to fruition, which would provide free community college tuition to anybody who has not yet earned a bachelor's degree. This expands on the Mass Reconnect program that began last year, which provided tuition for enrollees who are 25 or older. Kathy, I'm sure, can speak more to that if she were to choose, but that's another big thing in the state budget, which I think would have some pretty nice implications for students and for families as an option there. Dual enrollment and early college is not eligible for that, but we do have some funds to support dual enrollment or early college classes for...to a limited extent, but for our students at Barnstable High School. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Jen?
Yes, just to clarify then, the $500,000 that's in the budget now, it'll go to repay some of what the town has given us to make up the shortfall, is that correct?
So basically, what happens every year is that the final budget typically comes in at a different number than what was expected, and so the revenues go, you know, kind of back into the pool of revenues and get dispersed, along with other things that'll happen, like free cash getting certified and all of that, and will get redistributed based on 60-40.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I just wanted to...
That's the typical process.
Yeah, you know, nothing's typical these days. I just wanted to touch on the facilities issues and garner some support for having a larger conversation about this when it comes to potentially getting money for a new school. This is a conversation that I've wanted to have for a really long time in this town. My son goes to Barnstable High, and I'm really trying to get a conversation going and a greater understanding about how we put good money after bad. Every year, we have these aging facilities that are, you know, hurting people, that, you know, are not...they're just not worth it anymore, and we need to really start thinking about that. And if you add to that conversation the pressure of other school districts around us that are eating our lunch because they've got brand-new facilities, I think what I'm asking for is that parents start showing up and talking about it. It's...we're not even anywhere close. This committee has not made a decision regarding whether we're going to ask for a debt override, but that's what it's going to be, a debt exclusion, which means everybody pays a little bit more in taxes to build something like that, if everybody decides that's what they want to do. But it's time to start having these conversations, because, you know, we are every year putting your taxpayer money into these crumbling facilities, into facilities that we're closing in the middle of summer to fix, you know, age-old problems that are recurring. It's just not wise. You wouldn't do it in your own home. We shouldn't do it in our schools. But it's going to take a community to come together and learn about the process in which we...and again, I'm telling you, we're in the nascent stages of this. I'm in the nascent stages of this. But we need to start having these conversations, because the most important thing we have in this town are our children. It's our human capital. It's what's going to be our future, and we need to start planning that way. And, you know, we all believe Barnstable's great, or we wouldn't be here defending it, no matter what side we're on. So it's time to show everybody, we've got to put our money where our mouth is, and there's something beyond sewer happening in this town. It's our kids. So I'm going to count on the community members that come to these...come to public comment and want the best for their kids to start talking about what's really best for them, which is different facilities. We can't continue to do this. It's just not wise. If you were spending more money than you made every week, you'd be like, why am I spending more money than I make every week? That's what we're doing every single year. I saw it for 12 years on the town council. We'd bash our heads against a stone wall over it. So I ran for school committee to make a difference, to have this big conversation. Ultimately, it's the taxpayers' choice. If we get it on the ballot, it's the taxpayers' choice. But I don't know anybody...in my life, I don't associate with people that don't hold kids in the highest regard. So I'm going to depend on teachers, parents, whether they're angry or happy, students to come out and talk about these issues, because Tech has a new school, right? Go down Cape, NOSIT has a new school. Monomoy's brand new. Here we are. So I think we should start taking note of all the money we're putting, we have been, obviously, taking note of all the money that we're putting into these facilities, all the emergency, you know, repair people we have coming in to fix things, and start thinking about how we can think more wisely about using our resources. It's really important. And that's my soapbox for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Can I jump in? I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut anybody off. I did forget two things that I wanted to bring up. The first is the long-term solution. There is a capital improvement project that has been approved. The allocations have been made regarding, I guess, ultimately addressing the fundamental issue which keeps causing the moisture buildup at BUE related to the chiller and the...there's an opportunity to ultimately fundamentally fix that through a capital improvement project. That does take a little bit of time, but it is a priority, because in short order, especially with the Cape being very humid. We are not the only school district to have dealt with this this summer, and in fact, I think we were lucky that Service Master was able to help us out. I know they had multiple projects in other communities. And so ultimately, like, a fundamental solution needs to be had. And there are certainly...there's certainly attention needing to be paid in other buildings as well. I talked about the high school, for example, and there's some plans there as well. The full capital plan is available both for what was approved in FY '25, plus also what has previously been approved and what we're looking to do in the future. I forgot to mention the portables at Hyannis West and BCIS, which was another big project this spring and summer, so thank you for letting me go back to my report. Substantial completions of these structures occurred on August 13th, after which a punch list was developed. After the punch list gets developed, they have 10 days from there to finish that. The interior is by and large finished. There is some minor exterior work that's nearing completion. The final anchors are being delivered Thursday, and the final inspection is being scheduled for this Friday or Monday, pending the inspector's schedule for both schools, after which this will give us our occupancy. In the meantime, we have been cleared to move furniture in, and IT work has been ongoing.
May I just ask a question? Do you know what the ticket is on the CIP for having the HVAC replaced? Or the chiller replaced at BUES?
The financial number? I don't, off the top of my head.
I'm sure it's available. I'll find it online. Yeah.
Yeah. I know it's Project...I think it's Project 2024-146.
Wow, good. I'll look it up.
I may have been looking at it, but I don't know the financial dollar.
And I don't mean to suggest that we're not diligently addressing all the failures. We certainly are. The problem is there's too many failures. There's too many failures happening. So that's no one's responsibility up here. The responsibility of Dr. O'Hern is to respond to those failures, which she's doing a very good job of. But, you know, at some point, we have to get out in front of this. It's just...it's just not wise. Thank you.
I have a few questions, Jen, to add on to your point. You can include Dennis Yarmouth and Bourne in the list of districts that have recently secured new buildings, an elementary school in Bourne, an intermediate school in Dennis Yarmouth. Dr. O'Hern, my questions for you are in relation to the framework of our district. In your budget for the 2024-2025 school year, you spoke to, or you didn't speak to, you eliminated the school attorney position, correct?
I made that recommendation to the committee for your budget decisions.
Yes. So we do not have a school attorney. I remember stating at that meeting in accordance with the minutes that I was not comfortable with the district not having a school attorney in the event that a hot-button issue came up. Dr. O'Hern, I'm asking you these questions because I need to understand, this is a financial question, at its heart, in relation to something that's under your purview, our school attorney, who do we consult now that we don't have an in-person school attorney? Where does the school committee go? Again, for our legal guidance.
Sure. The school committee approved the consultation services of two firms. I think it was last December or last January. The one firm is Merrick O'Connell, and they do a number of things. It could be facilities, it could be contracting, they do personnel law, they do collective bargaining. And then there is a second firm that does student services, and that is Joyce Nuttall and McAvoy.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hern. I recall at said meeting, I don't have it in front of me, but I will get it. When we're having these investigations, when we're subcontracting these firms, they bill at an hourly rate. And I believe the dollar amount, again, speaking of taxpayer dollars, was $285 that was presented to the school committee, $285 an hour for these firms. to the school committee, $285 an hour for these firms. That's what I'm recalling. Is that accurate?
So I just want to do a point of order, and I'm not sure if this is directly related to the superintendent's report that she just gave, and so our questions at this point are to be questions directly related to her report that she just made. So this, we're not talking about legal fees during her report.
Kathy, this is something that falls under the school superintendent's purview for which we evaluate the superintendent, therefore I believe it is acceptable for school committee members to ask the superintendent questions related to those matters which are under her purview.
You can, you can, but I would ask that finance issues are to be held until we get to the finance portion of the agenda, and right now, we're providing, we are all provided the opportunity to ask the superintendent question, to clarify anything she gave in her superintendent's report. And there was nothing about legal issues in her superintendent report tonight, so that's for later.
Kathy, I take your point. Again, the question that I then have is, because this falls under the superintendent's purview, when would the committee be able to ask these pertinent questions in conjunction with the open meeting law so that we could have clear transparency about a very important financial component, specifically our legal fees, which are increasing?
We get budget reports monthly, and we're given those in a timely manner prior to the meeting, and then we're given the opportunity for clarification during the finance portion of the meeting, if it's dealing with finances. I'm not sure how this directly relates to the superintendent's comments that occurred a few minutes ago, but I'm asking that you withhold, talk about budget items for the finance area of the meeting.
Withhold this? The question is, again, related to a current warrant where I saw an exorbitant fee related to legal services? Kathy, I'm just, you want me to hold this until later? That's what you want me to do?
That's exactly what I've said twice, is that this is a finance question that you can ask during the finance portion of the meeting.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hearn, I do have some questions, again, related to facilities. You don't anticipate a delay in any of our programs? I saw that the intermediate, not the intermediate school, the United School and the high school were noted. We are anticipating a smooth beginning to the 2024-2025 school year, is that correct?
So the communication I sent out to families and to staff today provided what I anticipate to be, with the best information that I have today, that we'll be operating, that we'll be safe. There is still a lot of work to be done, so if the expectation is a pristine school, I didn't want to portray that. There may still be cleaning that needs to be done and work happening over Labor Day weekend, but we anticipate opening safe and operationally next week.
Thank you, Dr. Hearn. I'll withhold my further questions until later in the meeting.
Peter, do you have any questions?
Thanks.
All right, and I'm all set, thank you. All right. New business, item 3.1, suspend policy on policy adoption, BGB.
I'll move to suspend policy, BGB policy adoption for Agenda 3.2.
Is there a second?
Second, except I believe it's 3.1.
It is 3.1.
You got it correct.
No, no, it's, we're on item 3.1 to suspend the policy on policy adoption pertaining to item 3.2 only on tonight's agenda.
But we're voting 3.1.
But the motion is to suspend the two read for item 3.2.
Okay.
Usually, we have two reads. Right, so for clarification, we typically have two reads for a policy, and when it's important to have a revised policy in place in a more timely manner, and when there aren't substantive changes to the policies, we can invoke policy BGB, which says we don't need two reads. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Discussion, excuse me. So just to be clear, we're not discussing the nondiscriminatory and harassment and retaliation policy?
We're not discussing item 3.2.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.2, approve policy AC, nondiscrimination, including harassment and retaliation. So the revisions to this policy AC are, were to update for the United States Department of Education's recent amendments to the regulations implementing Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. So these are the, bringing our policies in line with the recent updates. You've probably read about them in the newspaper, and it's changing the wording to include some additional classes for protection.
I'll move to revise policy AC, nondiscrimination, including harassment and retaliation as presented in tonight's materials.
Second?
Discussion. Discussion.
We have a motion made and seconded.
And now discussion.
Would you?
Yes. This is an important topic, and it's interesting to me that we're looking at nondiscrimination, harassment and retaliation at this time. We're also going to be looking at what it means to be an equal opportunity employer.
Point of order.
Again, just to clarify.
Point of order for a minute. If you look at the changes that were made on the policy, the changes that were made on the policy were to bring the additional classifications regarding discrimination. The policy subcommittee reviewed those based on the attorney's revisions that were also considered with the MAS-C suggested revisions, and those were the only changes that were made to that policy. So if you can keep your comments directly to the changes and the revisions that were made to this policy, that would be helpful.
Yes, I will most certainly do that, Kathy, and I'm, it's curious to me that we are looking at these three together, and I just want to make sure that I have the information correct, that Barnstable High School does not tolerate discrimination.
We're not talking about that right now. We're looking at the policy revision, and if you open the policies that were provided last week on board docs, you'll see that the revisions are clearly redlined.
Kathy, I've seen the revisions.
Right.
I'm commenting on the policy during this discussion.
We're not talking about implementation, we're talking about wording changes in the policy.
Okay, wording changes in the policy. Thank you, Kathy. Looking at that, I'm just reading that we don't tolerate discrimination against students, parents, and employees, and the general public on the basis of race, color, and so on and forth. That's, it's good that our, we have this policy and that we're following through. Thank you.
Any other discussion? There's a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, this is a first read. The changes that were made to the protected classes also impacted policy GBA, which is item 3.3, and it also impacted item, policy GBA-1. The only changes that were made to those policies were to add additional protective classes to the policies. And this is a first read. The policy subcommittee does not yet have a date for its next meeting, but if you have any concerns about that, Peter and I sit on the policy committee, and the superintendent would be the person for the public to contact, or the employees and staff.
Point of information, Kathy, who, again, because this is very important, the fact that we are an equal opportunity employer and looking at this policy, that's the reason. I know, I don't intend to extend our meetings any longer, but when we're talking about fundamental principles, being an equal opportunity employer, I think that it's important to make sure that we get these policies correct. So if we did have questions, the committee, would we direct those to the superintendent?
You can, if you have suggestions for the policies, you can direct them to either Peter, or me, or the superintendent.
Thank you, Kathy.
But a point of information, these policies are developed at the state level, and we are adopting them.
Correct.
So it's not, this committee is not developing policies on equal opportunity employment. These are state policies that are handed to us.
Correct.
And we approve them. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Right.
We're not divining a new protected class in Barnstable or cutting anyone out. These are state laws.
Basically, we're doing what every other city and town is doing.
Yeah, it's not, it was a quick learning curve here, but this is nothing like town council where we make everything up. This is all like spoon-fed to us. What we have control over is arguably culture, direction, the soft-tissue things. Thank you.
Some policies just need to be updated just because it's, you know, you need to update things.
Right, so they were, the federal, they were updated at the federal level, and then that gets passed down to the state of Massachusetts, and then the school districts are required by law to make sure that our policies are in line with the federal and state regulations.
Again, point of information, the reason, again, I'm just wanting to understand, when I see nondiscrimination, when I see equal opportunity, the next policy is affirmative action, things directly tied to ensuring that we have diversity and inclusion, and the opportunity for employment, those are very important, and so I just wanted to make sure that I understood as we're moving forward with these essential policies. Thank you.
May I just add one thing? The policies are stalwart and thorough and, you know, written at the federal level. The problem with the diversity, equity, and inclusion thing is the housing problem. So, you know, that, again, that goes to our subcommittee discussions that we'll get into next time. We don't have equal opportunity housing. That's the issue, and it's not to be discussed tonight, but these policies are with every single school committee in the state. Thank you.
There was also a bulletin that we all received, put up by MAS-C that devoted a good amount of information to the updates. All right. Item 3.6, approve intermediate school athletics coordinator job description. Sarah?
I think it was 3.5, I believe.
That's okay, thank you.
Safety care coordinator job description.
Sure, so this is a proposal to the committee for some support from a BAO member to provide safety care coordination as a stipended position. Safety care is a physical management training that we do with selected staff, typically administrators, paraprofessionals, some teachers, that is to de-escalate and, as a last resort, if necessary, physically restrain students under very, very, very prescribed and specific circumstances and procedures. This is something that occurs across the district and is a little challenging for us to manage centrally, so we are looking for some support from a BAO member who is already participating in the safety care training as a trainer, to work with, you know, pending principal appointment of trainers and a core group of staff members to organize and oversee the district-wide trainings, recertifications, order training books, and maintain the records. This would be a stipend of $1,000.
Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve the safety care coordinator job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.6, approve intermediate school athletics coordinator job description.
Thank you. So this is a proposal to the school committee for consideration for a stipended position for a BTA member to be an athletics coordinator at the intermediate school. We had, we've had two very successful seasons, or years of multiple seasons of sports and really strong participation at the intermediate school. However, there are, and it's been so successful and so popular administratively, I think we have some, you know, some safety concerns regarding consistency, making sure that there's a go-to person for coaches during games if there's an issue, so that appropriate medical help can be called, making sure that permission slips are in, that students are eligible physically in order to participate. We don't have an athletic director overseeing the middle school. I don't think our current athletic department has the capacity to oversee the intermediate school, and I think that a site-based coordinator would best be able to provide support to the current admin assistant and the current principal and associate principals in helping to manage this program on-site. So I've been working with the BTA to develop this job description, to provide this assistance. We have been talking about the stipend being appropriately approximate to a coach's stipend. So a coach gets about $2,500 per season, and so this would be a stipend of, we anticipate it would be somebody in it for the full year, although hypothetically, it could be somebody who's doing it for one season and not the other two, and vice versa. The step one would be $2,500, and then there would be steps, which is consistent with our athletic stipend schedule, that would increase by 2% as the person gets more embedded in the, in the position and more experienced in it. So we're hopeful that we have your support and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just a comment, I'm thankful that we're looking at the intermediate school and, you know, getting a pipeline of athletes moving forward. It's so important for mental health, physical health, you know, academics, all of it, and it just really helps create a happier atmosphere and academic atmosphere in general, so I'm thankful, definitely I'll support this. I'm thankful that we're looking at that, thank you.
Andre?
To your point, Jen, I know that the participation at the intermediate school is high, number of events put on by former principal Jason Canetta, their Turkey Bowl, they have staff versus students, and I believe that those things are going to go on. So this is, I think, a wise investment to have somebody to assist the good work that's taking place at the high school with our current athletic director, to see those same gains at the intermediate school.
I'll move to approve the intermediate school athletics coordinator job description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Item 4.4. Wait a minute, wait, wait, 4.1. Approve installation of municipal sewer infrastructure on school property at the Cape Cod Collaborative and Barnstable United Elementary School, and that's Griffin, I hope I don't mispronounce your name, Bowden?
I'm pretty close, Bowden.
Bowden, Bowden, I'm sorry.
Got the first name right. Good evening and thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda this evening to talk about this important project for our sewer expansion program. Quick agenda, I'll try not to be too long, but there is a lot of information here, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. We'll do a quick overview of our CWMP and where this particular item fits into it. I'll go through it quickly, but there's important context here that I just want to make sure that we provide. I'll talk about the specific project that we're discussing, and then the two particular impacts to school property that we're proposing as part of the implementation of this project. So our CWMP, what does the CWMP do, right? It identifies wastewater needs of the community. It's designed to address multiple wastewater needs, most notably nitrogen needs for TMDL compliance in our estuaries, but also to protect ponds and water supplies, targeted economic development, and other sanitary needs of the community. It is a free, it's a free 10-year phase project for 30 years total. We're currently in year four of this program. This is an overview of what that program looks like. It's focused on sewer expansion. These are the parcels that are identified for sewer expansion in the community. The areas in red are our Phase 1, the first 10 years of the program. The areas in green are Phase 2, the second 10 years of the program. The areas in yellow are the three, the third 10 years of the program. Each phase is- Each phase is broken up into multiple projects. This figure just shows the multiple projects that are in Phase 1. I highlighted with arrows the two areas in question this evening, which are the Cape Cod Collaborative property and the Marston Mills wastewater treatment plant at Barnstable United Elementary School. So what are the goals of Phase 1? I highlighted the two goals that this project is working towards achieving. The first goal is construction of the sewers on Route 28, which are the backbone of our sewer expansion program. All the flow from the westerly portion of our community will be conveyed down Route 28, so it's very important that we get this infrastructure in the ground to be able to continue the sewer expansion program. The second goal that this program will, that this particular project will help achieve is sewer expansion adjacent to Prince Cove and Warren's Cove, which is the most impaired water bodies in the Three Bays portion of the community. All right, so the project in question is called our Route 28 West Sewer Expansion Project. There are a couple of goals of this project, most notably to extend sewer on Route 28 from Old Stage Road to Route 149, which will be the backbone of our western sewer expansion. It also includes portions of Osterville West Barnstable Road, Bumps River Road, Oldham Road and Old East Osterville Road. There are approximately five sewer pump stations included in this project, proposed in this project. One of the major goals of this project is to decommission the Marston Mills wastewater treatment plant, which is located at the Barnstable United Elementary School property, and I'll get into that in a moment. It's actually ranked as the number three project on this year's 2024 State Revolving Fund Clean Water Intended Use Plan. What this is, is this is a list of projects that get submitted to the state every year for consideration for funding, so this was viewed as a very important project in the Commonwealth. Town council, this past April, as part of the capital improvement program appropriated 59-plus million dollars for the construction of this project. The project's currently at 60% design and we're anticipating starting construction next So how does, why am I here, right? How do schools fit into this project, right? So on this figure, I kind of zoomed into the previous figure that shows the areas in red are where we're going to be putting pipes in the ground and the parcels that we're going to be serving. The stars in yellow are the proposed pump stations. One of them's proposed at the Cape Cod Collaborative property, I'll get into that in a moment. And then the area in blue is just highlighting the Marston Mills wastewater treatment plant, which is a current treatment plant that services the Barnstable United and West Villages schools. And that's part of, the decommissioning of that is part of this program. All right, so about the Cape Cod Collaborative property, as we were designing this project, there was, there was the need for pump stations to, in order to support the sewer expansion on Route 28. At a certain point, we, we aren't able to leverage gravity and we need to overcome gravity through a series of pumps, which are referred to as pump stations. We have to strategically design the system such that they're located at low points, so that not every location in town works, right? So we have to kind of comb the community, looking at where roads more or less converge at low points, and those are the locations that we target for, for the installation of these sewer pump stations. Early on in the program, the Cape Cod Collaborative property was identified as a, as a strong technical candidate for a sewer pump station. It's an ideal candidate to support the sewer expansion on Route 28 from South County Road to Old East Osterville Road. It's also an ideal technical location to support the future sewer expansion on the east side of the Three Bays. So the figure that you have in front of you, the orange line represents all the parcels that would be serviced by this pump station at the full build-out of our program. So this would be an important, an important piece of infrastructure for the program. Also in combing through the town-owned parcels, there was not another town-owned parcel that met both of these goals. And so that's how we landed on identifying the Cape Cod Collaborative property as, as our proposed site. So it may be a little hard, hopefully it's a little easier to see on your screen, but the area on the bottom left of the screen is the proposed location for the pump station site. It's marked in, in a, in a red box. It was provided, that's part of the agenda, is Exhibit B as well. The proposal is for about 4,000 square feet of the, of the property in the southeastern or southwestern corner of the property to be basically utilized for the sewer pump station. The sewer pump station would be, would have a building that houses equipment, a small building, more like a shed, and I have a picture on the next screen, on the next slide. It's about 12 by 15 as proposed. It would have a driveway, a backup generator and some below-grade utilities, and then we would look to screen the site upon completion. A couple of stats of note, the proposed limited clearing for this area would be about 360 feet away from the nearest point of the school. So it is a fairly decent stretch away from the school. That was one benefit to the location we were able to find on this site. It's also 180 feet to the nearest point of clearing. So if you look kind of on the screen here, you have the, I can't get the clicker to work, but you have the, the red box and then you have the tree line on the eastern, on the western side. It's about 180 feet to the nearest point of clearing. So a good buffer between the school facility that we're proposing. So what would it look like? On the left is an early site plan of basically how we would develop the site, of minimal cleared area, basically just around what's needed to be developed. A small shed on the bottom right is actually an existing pump station in Hyannis on Marston's Ave, which we will be modeling this proposed pump station after. So you can see that, that, that's what we would anticipate the station will look like upon completion. And the top right is the location in question from a Google Street View. But we would install a driveway and, and a shed very similar to this around the equipment with a backup generator behind, behind the shed in order to provide service during power outages. So what are the next steps? I'm here tonight to at least introduce this topic and eventually there, eventually, if not this evening, there would be a need for a vote from the school committee, and there is a recommended language for the vote on the slide. I consulted the town attorney's office with what they thought the recommended language would need to be. Effectively, the school, the recommended language would be that the school committee would declare this area as surplus and turn it back to the town manager for the purposes of constructing a sewer pump station and under the control of the, of the Department of Public Works. There are other steps after that. The town council would need to accept the transfer, the transfer, and then we would complete the design and start construction in the fall of '25 with the project anticipating to be completed in 2028. So that's the Cape Cod Collaborative property. There is a second school that I alluded to that is impacted by this project, and it's Barnstable United Elementary School, as well as West Villages, but West Villages is kind of disconnected from the area of proposed work. So in 1993, the community built a wastewater treatment plant at the Barnstable United Elementary School, adjacent to the Barnstable United Elementary School, that served the two schools. It also serves the adjacent housing community, which you can see on the bottom left of the slide. The building is actually a school building, as far as I can tell, based on the existing agreements that are in place. The most notable, the most recent one of which I could find was 2004, in which the school committee in the town agreed that DPW would operate and maintain this wastewater treatment plant for the schools. So as we developed the CWMP, we identified that decommissioning this facility was a goal of the program. There were a couple of reasons for that. One, it is approaching the end of its useful life and is in need of significant capital rehabilitations in the next five years. So we prioritize trying to, trying to take a common sense approach to avoiding those capital needs and, and also addressing, removing nitrogen from these nitrogen-sensitive watersheds. So right now, the wastewater that's treated at this facility discharges below the field around the track, so we would like to get that, that wastewater discharged out of this watershed because it's a nitrogen-sensitive watershed, bring it back to the wastewater treatment plant here in Hyannis where it can be treated to a higher, a higher level and disposed of. So the proposal that we are currently proposing as part of this project would be to effectively intercept all the sewers. So back on this previous slide, there's a bunch of red lines. That's roughly how the sewers all kind of go through the property. They all converge at the wastewater treatment plant. Would you be looking to intercept those sewers and install new sewers, roughly shown in red here, that go out to this, go out to Osterville West Barnstable Road and to the new collection system we'll be building as part of this project? Once the new sewers are completed, the wastewater treatment plant would then be decommissioned, so all the equipment would be removed. It would effectively be a shell or it could be, or it could be demoed, right? So we've had some initial conversations with, with Superintendent Hearn about potentially being able to utilize the space. It is a facility, it is a building that has good bones, so there are potentially opportunities to, to leave the building as storage and then potentially do more with it in the future. So we would look to restrict all the work on the site to summer months, so outside of school, school months, but we will be using certainly at least a whole summer season to be able to complete this work. So there are some programmatic needs of the fields as well as the schools that we've started to talk about that we would need to see if, would there need to be modifications to, but we think that there's opportunities to work around that. So with this particular location, there's not a vote or anything required of the school committee. This is really providing an update as to what we're planning to do with that, with the wastewater treatment plant, in that we're planning to decommission it. We are seeking some input from the school committee on the future of the wastewater treatment plant. Really, do you want us to demo it or do you want us to leave a shell and return it back to the school? We've started that conversation again with Superintendent Hearn, but we would like to get some formal, some formal input on, on that decision point. So next steps for this is providing a briefing today, this evening, and we'll be completing the design. We'll coordinate directly with the school department. I assume the new, the new facilities director will be closely coordinating with us on this, as well as recreation staff to the extent that they utilize the site. And construction would be anticipated to be completed either during the summer of 2026 or potentially the summer of 2027. Potentially, there's work both summers. That will be more understood once we've hired a contractor. So that's what I have for tonight. I hope I was as quick as possible, but certainly if you have any questions, I certainly would be willing to take them now.
Jen, do you have any questions?
I do, yeah. Thank you for coming. I think it's really important that we talk about these big town projects in both venues.
Of course.
For town council and for, for school committee, because the fact is, it affects all of us.
Absolutely.
And I think we have different audiences. But, you know, $59 million was allocated for this portion of a billion-dollar sewer project. This is not an optional thing. We have to do it. It's part of the Clean Water Act and it's going to trickle down and affect everything, including housing. And I wonder, to that point, if, if the treatment plant has been looked at as a possible site for housing, it might be an interesting way to get new teachers to the district if we could renovate it and make it useful that way.
Yeah, so that's an interesting question. It's relatively, relatively small, but it certainly is not, not smaller than a single-family residence by any means. As part of this project, we've budgeted for basically demo or, or leaving a shell, so a usable shell for effectively storage. But we do think there are potential options for the facility after, though they need to be further vetted.
No, thank you. Very informative and to Jen's point, kind of helping me understand how this overarching wastewater, wastewater project, which you can't drive in this town and not see, does dovetail with us and the schools and where we can be efficient in our use of resources. Thank you.
Yeah, that was very informative, appreciated. Well done. Maybe I missed it, the BUES, the field, and what happens to that, did you say? Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, sorry. Like I said, I was trying to get through everything quick. So the current wastewater treatment plant, so it treats the, it's the wastewater that comes into it
Yes.
And then it has to dispose of it.
Yeah.
So what it does is there's actually a subsurface leaching field, similar to your septic system at your home. That's below the field, it's a large septic, a large leaching field, but it's below the field, so they would be abandoned as part of this.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
And then I just have one question. When you go back, couple of slides with the collaborative, this second vote would come after the installation, when you're talking about the existing site?
You're talking about the Cape Cod Collaborative vote?
Yes.
So we'd be looking for this vote to occur to inform the design, so sometime in the
It would come after we see the design.
Well, the design is
That is the design.
This is, this is the design as it currently stands, yes. So there's more detail to work through, but
Okay.
This is the, this is effectively the design that we're, that we're considering at the moment.
Okay, but for, for this evening, we're just giving the initial approval for the infrastructure to be on that site?
Right, so
Okay.
This evening, I was looking to provide the information. There will need to be a formal vote in order to transfer the, this portion of the site to the town manager's authority, effectively, and the town council would have to, to accept that. That could occur this evening or that could occur at another time. We will need to have that occur this fall.
I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Kathy, if it helps, I don't mind voting tonight.
I'm just trying to clarify whether we're going with a, the actual wording that you've proposed for the recommended vote language.
I could read it if you'd like me to.
No, we, we have it, everybody has it there. I'm just wondering if that's the language or the less definitive language.
If this is coming from the attorneys on the town, I would maybe go with their recommended language.
All right, so any other questions or comments? It sounds like the purview is to go ahead and take action tonight. Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion then. This one, Pete.
Yeah, I'll make a motion in accordance with MGL, C4015A. The school committee hereby determines that an area of land being a portion of the Cape Cod Collaborative school property, parcel 144004, as shown on Exhibit B, is no longer needed at this time for school purpose and directs that notice of this determination shall be given to the town council, which shall include a recommendation to the council that care, custody and management of this area of land is transferred to the town manager for the purpose of constructing and operating a sewer pump station by the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for tonight.
I'd be happy to come back anytime for, with more updates
We may take you up on that.
On the program or this project, so feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 4.2, approve safety care coordinator position and stipend.
So this is to approve the position and stipend that we just talked about in 3.5.
I move to approve the safety care coordinator position stipend as presented in tonight's material.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, approve intermediate school athletics coordinator position and stipend.
I move to approve the intermediate school athletics coordinator position and stipend as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 4.4, approve intermediate school athletic fees.
Thank you. So this is, there's a memo in your packet to sort of share the context of this recommendation or request. It was in our minds in the spring and I'm sorry that we didn't bring it forward as part of the, the fee request. I guess the fortunate thing is over the summer, we've had a tremendous amount of conversation about intermediate school athletics, both with former principal Canetta and now principal Arlington. The program is very well-supported, but looking at the budgets, there is not an unlimited amount of money to support the intermediate school's athletic program. And there is a recommendation here, consistent with us assessing fees at the high school for athletics, to have a middle school fee charge of $100 per student, that's less than what we currently charge for high school athletics, to help cover the costs of the stipends for coaches, equipment, paying of officials, transportation. I mean, it does cost tens of thousands of dollars to run this program and a fee would, would help to offset it. The cap would be $300 per family. The anticipated revenue generated would be on the order of 10,000 to 20,000 and the principal would have the discretion to waive the fee for those who are struggling economically. And that's what we do at the high school.
Any questions? Jen?
Just that I support it, I think $100 is a fair price and I'm happy that athletics is back at BIS.
Okay. Andre.
Yeah, I, again, I have some reservations. Anytime we're, we're talking about new fees for our services and, you know, my, my question, okay, so we do it at the high school, but we had a robust debate in we had a robust debate in order to get to that number at the high school. So I'm, I have a little bit of a reservation with just all of a sudden going ahead and approving it now at the middle school without a further understanding of why exactly, all of a sudden, you know, we need, we need these fees at the, at the intermediate school. Yes, we do it at the high school, great. But in the discussion about what we do, what was done at the high school, there was never the component that, well, we're doing it, this at the high school, and we envision doing this at the middle school. Therefore, what I mean by that is, so now when we have fees at the middle school, are we going to have fees at the United School? And because we have fees at the United School, are we going to then have fees at the elementary school? You know, the bottom line, I recognize that everything costs money, sure, but the debate, the conversation that we had, I thought it was very fruitful in terms of continuing to draw from the same well and the same taxpayer. You know, and so for me personally, I, I don't feel comf, I, I need some further information in terms of why, why we're now going to have athletic fees, and how, how we might be able to avoid these with some efficient spending elsewhere.
Peter?
Yeah, sure. I'm never one for a fan of fees, but I find this very reasonable. We want a strong desire for our kids to participate in interscholastic athletics, and, you know, any program from the rec on down, you pay a fee, and $100 seems extremely reasonable to me. And I was one that battled the high school fees, and so I, I don't have an issue with this.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Peter?
I'll move to approve the intermediate school athletics fees as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item 4.5, end-of-year financial overview, fiscal '24. Mr. Dwellie.
Good evening. Here to provide the committee with a very brief update on how the school district closed out fiscal year '24. From a financial position, for the general fund operating budget, our revolving funds, as well as the school savings account. So to start with our general fund, happy to report that we will be closing out the year in a net positive position. As it stands to date, we've got about $318,000 in unused operating budget expenses that'll go back to the school savings account that you will see in the balance next year. One caveat that we always give on that is that while we're in fiscal year '25, we technically haven't closed out, from a book standpoint, FY '24, until early September. The reason being is that there's still some activity that occurs on a limited basis, invoices that might have gotten lost or unpaid that need to be paid, and also purchase orders that were encumbered in FY '24 that we continue to work with departments to see, can we clean these out? Are they no longer needed, which will increase that balance there? So there's some small activity, but not to the magnitude of the amount that you see here. So overall, closing in a net positive position. From a special revenue side, these are the school district's revolving funds. This is very difficult to read, but what I would draw your attention to is the last two columns, the net balance at the end of the fiscal year, and then the net change, which is the activity that's occurred throughout the fiscal year. What we try to do, and what is school committee policy, is to retain one year's worth of expenses in that net balance column for each project. If you read through this, you will see that in most instances, we have that. One area of concern, however, is with the school athletic revolving fund, whose net balance at the end of the year is far below what we anticipate them to spend next year. So we hope that with the fees that were approved by the committee in the spring for high school athletics, and now the fees here for the middle school, will help to ensure that the athletic department is, is able to do their work and live within their budgetary constraints. But beyond that, no, no issues, no major concerns here. And lastly, school savings. So we started the year with $10.2 million. We folded the ESAR costs, or a majority of our ESAR costs, into the operating budget to the tune of $2.3 million. We support the capital program to the tune of $2.1 million, which leaves us with a remaining balance of $5.7 million. That's how we're closed out '24. I listed here an estimated beginning balance. It won't be correct, but it's what we're estimating we'll start with next year after everything gets certified, after the books close, and after everything gets certified by the state, we get a new free cash number. But we anticipate it to be in the, around the range of $9, $10 million that we'll have available to us in the fall, once everything gets certified. So that's it. This presentation is in your packet, along with two reports that we typically provide. One is a summary of all the sites in the district-wide departments, and how essentially they fared this year at the end of the year. And then the other report is a more detailed one that shows every single line item within those sites and within that department, so you can see the actual activity from start to finish in FY '24. Happy to take any questions.
Jen? Andre?
No questions.
Peter?
Nice report, no questions.
Yeah, and Chris, I, I do appreciate you've given us a good amount of time to look through it, and I do appreciate all the detail. I think I'm the only one that really enjoys looking at those financial reports, but...
I'll second that.
I, I think it's important, and I do like to follow it, and so it's, it is very helpful, especially that you give us adequate time.
All right.
Thank you for the work. I know it's extra on your plate.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay. All right, and item 4.6, approve accounts payable warrant 20, fiscal year '25, warrant number eight.
I move to approve accounts payable warrant FY '25 warrant eight, in the amount of $569,388.72.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, and motion has been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And I didn't have a chance to look at it, so I am abstaining. Motion carries unanimously. The new consent agenda had three items in it. We can, it's 5.1, we've got school committee meeting minutes, 5.2, school committee for July 11th, 2024, school committee meeting minutes for July 17, 2024, special school committee meeting minutes August 1, and the grants, gifts, and donations. Since this is presented as a consent agenda, we could take the entire agenda as one item. So, do we, it would be helpful if, oh, that's all right, the explanation was provided.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented in tonight's materials.
An emotion made and...
Discussion.
Discussion.
So this is new, us doing this. I am not prepared to approve the special school committee minutes of July 11th, having not seen those minutes.
Those minutes have been posted since, I read them last, last week. Those, these, these items have been posted on board docs for about a week. The only difference in the agenda is, instead of having our routine agenda at the very beginning of the meeting, and treating each one of those four items as separate motions and separate votes, they were consolidated. There's nothing that's been changed to the timing of the documents that we've received, and they have been in there, they have been in there.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. This is a new protocol. I was actually really looking forward to seeing the minutes from the special school committee meeting on July 11th, which was a meeting that entailed very important district business, and for us on the school committee. I want the community to be, to be aware of that. And it was my understanding that we were going to have access to the special school committee meeting minutes and executive session, and then improve...
These are open session minutes. These are open session minutes. They have been posted on board docs under item number five, consent agenda.
Understood, understood, understood. So, so that was a very brief open session, and then the executive session minutes are something different, which we will look at, at another point in time. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So a motion has been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Executive session. Move to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session, to approve the school committee executive session minutes of July 11, 2024, and July 17, 2024, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable Teachers, or Barnstable Administrators Organization, and to discuss a Barnstable Teachers Association grievance.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Meeting, open meeting is now adjourned.